All right, it is seven fifteen. I'm going to call a meeting to order. We do have a board, Ms. Banel will be joining us remotely. I just feel a little under the weather, but want to participate, so we'll link Mr. Rickett.
This is A.I., the society of education. So guidance rule over our hearts and our minds that all deliberations and decisions may be in accordance with your will and lead to advancement in welfare and community of Stratford.
All right, so just a brief comment. We recently finished up a policy for, put forward a policy for A.I. The thing I want to talk about is the depth and talent we have within our community here, whether it's our board committees or some of the task forces that Ms. Borges has put together. I'm constantly amazed at what we're accomplishing with these committees, the vast array of knowledge and experience and the willingness of our staff to get involved with these. We keep, the A.I. task force, for instance, I think we have twenty, twenty people, twenty plus people on there, and they're new people I haven't seen before who are, who have great input, great insight, great ideas, a willingness to put forward, a willingness to enter the discussion. Mr. Kowalski's here today, who helped us with the policy on A.I. We had a group of about six or seven within that group. We've got a bunch of new stuff coming out of curriculum. I'm just really excited about the wide array and variety of people who are in these committees, their willingness, both in, both the staff and within the community, and the input that our board is putting in as well. So it's really exciting to see, and it's really great to see what kind of talent and passion there is within our community, both with the staff and community members and board members. So I look forward to some, you know, we've got another six months with this, with this board. I'm looking forward to some new great things, some new directions. And I'm really excited, I'm really appreciative that there are so many people who are willing to get involved and put their time, effort, and share their experience with us. So it's amazing what can be accomplished when we work together. And this has been, for me, a great year and a half to see that happen. So I want to thank everybody for this occasion. Public forum, do we have any? Nope, okay. Student representatives? Were they made aware? Oh, they're here, oh, okay, come on up.
I think they're waiting, can't tell them which ones go first.
Uh, we'll go with Zoe. So I think the order is always the same, so.
Good evening, Stratford Board of Education, Acting Superintendent Borges, and my fellow Stratford residents. My name is Zoe Bernard, and it's a pleasure to be able to speak to you this evening to inform you on the different activities that took place at Stratford High School during the past month. Last month, the Stratford varsity dance team went to Orlando, Florida for the Universal Dance Association National Championship. I would like to thank the Board of Education and Acting Superintendent Borges for giving us the opportunity to compete in this competition. This was a once-in-a-lifetime experience for me and my teammates. Although we just missed the top ten by less than a point, the feedback we received from the judges along with the motivation we gained from watching the competition is invaluable. In fact, on February fifth, after returning from Florida, we attended the Southwest Conference Championship at Brookfield High School, and at the end of, at, at, at the end of the night, we were crowned the S.W.C. champions. Additionally, the C.I.A.C. state championships were held this past Saturday, and I'm happy to announce that we finished second in the state in the small hip-hop division. Our second-place finish also qualifies us for the New England Championships, which will be held at Trumbull High School on March fourteenth. Our team is putting our best effort, working ardently, and we are proud to represent Stratford. On Thursday, February twentieth, S.H.S. hosted future Red Devils and their families to their annual grade-eight orientation. It was a great night, and the families that attended were amazed with Stratford High School and what we have to offer. A special thank you to Dr. Piazza for coming to support S.H.S. In the STEM department, teachers are working to offer students frequent opportunities to engage with material to help them prepare for upcoming and future standardized assessments in the form of the SAT and NGSS assessment. Additionally, teachers are continuing to explore ways to offer collaborative learning experiences that help students connect their work to our portrait of a graduate competencies. Specific to science, Mr. Walsh and a few science students are excited for the upcoming science elebvia at UConn. They have been working hard to prepare and plan to improve on their past successes. Specific to math, the math team is looking forward to their in-person competition in March at Southern Connecticut State University. They performed well last year and hope to improve upon their score from 2024. When it comes to the Humanities Department, we can say that throughout the year, Ms. Teague's UConn seminar students have been engaged with the course inquiry of identity, which explores the influence various elements have on someone's identity. Students are in the middle of their third unit, Culture and Identity, understanding what culture is and how one's culture may affect their individual identity now or in the future. In creative writing, Mr. Yasek's students are currently exploring how to use effective dialogue, both to develop characters and advance the plot of a story. And in Mr. Frazek's U.S. history classes, students concluded the study on the roaring twenties, and they are now moving into the Great Depression and the New Deal. Students will be gearing up to develop and create an advertising pamphlet for the Second New Deal. The school counseling department has begun meeting with all students to select courses for the twenty-five to twenty-six school year. These meetings happen in a one-to-one setting where students can individually discuss their future plans and courses that would be beneficial to their success. On February tenth, from four to six, a FAFSA event was held where twelve families came to Stratford High to complete their FAFSA. On February nineteenth, sophomore students were provided the opportunity to visit the University of New Haven. Students were able to tour the campus and see classes in progress. Stratford High School's post-prom committee is hosting a family bingo night on Friday, April fourth. Please come out to support a great cause in what is sure to be an exciting night. In athletics, Stratford High School freshman Kyra McLean had an amazing year for our indoor trap team. Not only did she set the school record four times, but she was also the S.W.C. champion in the fifty-five-meter dash. Additionally, she tied for fourth in the state championships. What a great way to start off your high school career. Congratulations, Kyra. At the end of the state championships, Dylan Assunchin set a new record in the fifteen-hundred with a time of four minutes and forty seconds, which put him in eighth place overall. Well done, Dylan. Girls' basketball closed out the regular season with back-to-back victories. As the eighteenth seed of thirty-two in the state tournament, they will face fifteenth seed Cheshire High School in the first round of the state tournament on Saturday, March first, at Cheshire High School. On February fifteenth, the Stratford High School cheer team won first place in Bradford's Cheer Your Heart Out competition. This is a great start for the state championships, which will be held on Saturday at Trumbull High School. Good luck to the Banel Boys Basketball Team as they play for the S.W.C. championship tonight. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today, and I hope everyone will enjoy their evening.
So you were asked, I think, to come because you took the field trip?
That's later.
It's in the agenda?
Yeah, it's in the agenda.
Where is it?
It's right before the data presentation. Presentations, super one.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay. I just want to make sure we got to them.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Bernardo, and it is a pleasure to speak with you all this evening. In the STEM department, the math and science honor societies have collected applications for their respective groups, and applicants will be notified this spring for induction towards the end of this year. The Audubon Society visited Banel in February during lunch wave to recruit students to assist in the Salt Marsh Preservation Project. Students also have the opportunity to be paid for their services. The application deadline has been extended from February twenty-eighth to March seventh. Banel math students will attend a math competition at Southern Connecticut State University in March to compete in rigorous puzzle solving against regional schools. In our humanities, we recognize social studies teacher Michelle Scatamachia for her sense of work in partnership with the state on our African-American and Puerto Rican Latino studies course. Michelle delivered a model lesson to her peers around the state at S.E.R.C. last month, representing Banel and receiving high praise for her content knowledge. Mr. Jockle and Mr. Mignon's Black and Latino chorus will be participating in a lyrical showcase through which exemplary student-produced lyrics are set to professional music. This is in partnership with The Blues and Beyond, which is an educational resource used to support the implementation of this course. We congratulate Zawadi O'Brien for moving on to the semifinals in the Rotary Four Way Speech Contest. Zawadi's speech examines the modern black female experience. Good luck, Zawadi. On February twenty-fourth, the Guidance Department will begin meeting with students individually to discuss grades, current interests, future goals, and lastly, course recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year. These individual meetings will continue to take place until mid-March. Students who need assistance with completing their financial aid application can register for appointment on March first from nine a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m. in the Banel Library. We are excited to hear from students as they commit to their colleges. This is an exciting time of year for both our counselors and our seniors. In our Fine Arts Department, we are excited to announce our 2025 C.I.A.C., C.A.S. arts recipients. Daniel Planas for Performing Arts and Karina Rivera for Visual Arts. We look forward to a recognition award show in April. Banel's stage theater program is excited to announce that our spring musical is Disney's High School Musical. Mark your calendars for our performance dates, May eighth, ninth, and tenth. Tickets will be on sale very soon. Banel's own Daniel Planas not only earned a spot in the Connecticut Music Educators Association Western Regionals Jazz Ensemble, but was also recently accepted into the Connecticut All States Jazz Ensemble. He's on, he's one of only two saxophonists from the entire state who auditioned and were accepted into this prestigious musical group. This achievement has now been awarded to a Stratford student in quite some time, so we're incredibly proud of his hard work and dedication to his craft. Congratulations, Daniel. In athletics, Jordan Pierce joined the one-thousand-point club during a league game at Massacre High School on February fourth. Senior Jordan Pierce for Boys Basketball and Senior Kiara Polero for Cheer will be recognized as the March Athletes of the Month. The Boys Basketball Team plays for the S.W.C. League Championship Game tonight at Western Connecticut State University going into the Division III State Tournament. The Boys Basketball Team has a top speed with a regular season record of seventeen to three. Maile Pierre-Paul and Katie Morin both won their weight classes in the S.W.C. championship tournament. We have ten wrestlers who placed in states and will be moving on to the state opens. Nico Pasaro, Mackay Gardner, Maile Pierre-Paul, Katie Morin, Richie Martyr, Brittany Cortez, Snai Lopez, Kiara Moreno, Matilda Toh, and Catherine Lorenzo. Congratulations to all of those. In student government, they are currently registering donors for our upcoming blood drive on March fourth. Students, parents, teachers, and community members are being encouraged to donate. Representatives from our school government will also be attending the C.A.S.C., which is Mission Leadership State Convention, on March seventh. Our mentor group, the Bulldogs in Training, will be participating in a Black History Month S.E.L. activity at S.H.L. in Flood on February twenty-eighth. Women's Empowerment Club has been busy planning for their Fourth Annual Women's Leadership Meet and Greet at the end of March. Before I wrap up, I would like to give a quick shout-out to Ms. Mazza, who is one of our amazing business teachers at Banel, as well as the person who runs DECA. I'm excited to announce that our DECA club has recently won two Thrive Achievement Awards, recognized by DECA International Organization, as well as a gold certification for Bulldog Business. We are one of the two high schools in Connecticut to earn the gold certification, or certification. With these achievements comes an opportunity to participate in the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida from April twenty-sixth to the thirtieth. Congratulations to all of our DECA members. Thank you for your time and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. So our attorneys will not be presenting a report this evening. Ms. Carol Fadyen, did you have something for legislators?
I did. The legislature is currently in session, so Stratford's representatives couldn't be here tonight. However, they've sent a statement for me to share on their behalf. Stratford delegation issued statement on forty million state investment into special education. Connecticut remains steadfast in its commitment to funding special education. This evening, the Connecticut House of Representatives will approve a forty million investment to help municipalities meet the growing needs of special education programs for the current fiscal year. Stratford will receive approximately six hundred and fifty thousand as part of this funding, which will be distributed through the existing excess cost sharing grant program. The six hundred and fifty thousand figure is based on December twenty-two four numbers and might decrease slightly when more. will help ensure that students receive the specialized support they need to thrive. This evening's forty million statewide investment is a crucial step in supporting Stratford schools, students, teachers, and families. However, we recognize this is only a temporary solution. Our goal is to achieve long-term systematic reform to ensure sustainable funding for special education. The need for reform is urgent. Special education costs have skyrocketed in recent years, placing a growing strain on municipalities and school districts. Consider, in fiscal year 2022, fully funding ECS required one hundred and seventy-five point seven million. By fiscal year 2023, that number had jumped to two hundred and three point eight million. In fiscal year 2024, the cost soared to two hundred and sixty million. For fiscal year 2025, it is projected to reach a staggering two hundred and eighty-nine point three million. Without long-term solutions, these escalating costs will continue to burden local budgets and affect the quality of education for our students. We remain committed to working toward a more equitable and sustainable funding model that meets the needs of all students, families, and educators. And this is from Representative Joe Resko, Representative Caitlin Shig, Representative Ben McGordy, and Senator Erin Gaston.
Ms. Rickett, the State Board of Education.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you this evening about what's going on with the State Board of Education and the Department of Education. As you may know, there was no State Board of Education meeting in February. Our next meeting is actually next Wednesday. But I do have some updates on the legislative package that I brought before you that was passed by the State Board back in December. The Act implementing the recommendations of the Department of Education became Re's Senate Bill twelve eighty-eight. There was a public hearing on that on February nineteenth. There was, unsurprisingly to me anyway, there was a lot of opposition to that bill from the private SPED programs. Many people who testified stated that it was unrealistic to be able to provide special education costs to districts by December thirty-first, and others stated that they didn't perceive it was fair that they were being singled out while resks who often provide similar services were not included in the bill. Having said that, this bill did garner the support of multiple people who spoke on behalf, including C.E.A. and A.F.T., so that's certainly positive in that regard. The governor, as you probably know, also has two education bills. Both of them also received a public hearing on the nineteenth. The first is an Act implementing the Governor's Budget Recommendations for Education, which is House Bill sixty-eight sixty-six. He also has a special education bill, S.B. twelve forty-four. So those will be working its way through committees. And there is an education committee hearing on Wednesday of this week, though none of those particular bills are on the docket for that. I did just want to call everyone's attention to the fact that the General Assembly does allow the public to very easily track bills. If you're not familiar with it, you can literally just Google search Connecticut General Assembly Bill Tracking, and it asks you to sign up with your name and an email address. And then, once you're on the General Assembly website, you can look up any bill that you want and click on, like, there's a blue plus button, and it just adds it to your account, and anything that goes on with that bill, you'll get an immediate email within twenty-four hours. So those are bills that I'm personally tracking. You also already heard that the House convened tonight at five o'clock. The Senate's convening tomorrow at twelve. We expect both chambers to vote on this forty million dollars of state funding, to clarify it's for this year, not down the road as what is in the Governor's package. The other thing that they may be taking up tonight is Bill seven sixty-six. It's a very, very long bill, it was probably forty pages long. But the first four sections of it are the parts that are the Act concerning interactions between school personnel and immigration authorities. And the main purpose of that will be assuming that it passes that the Superintendent of Schools as of April first will designate one person in each school building to be the point of contact for anything to do with contact with immigration. It also modifies the existing statutory language about school safety and climate committees to say that that particular administrator must be a member of the School Safety and Climate Committee. And it also clarifies that no disciplinary action can be taken against any staff member for following a school or district's safety and climate plan in their interactions with immigration. So if that, it's supposed to be taken up tonight and tomorrow, so that might also get, become effective at the end of the month. In regards to the special education funding, the governor has not said he would veto it, but he has publicly stated that he believes that this bill is fiscally irresponsible. So it'll be interesting to see what happens, because it is assumed that both the House and the Senate will vote in favor of it. So we'll have to see how that plays out. And the only other thing that I can say is what was already in the news in terms of the Dear Colleague Letter that the U.S. Department of Education sent out to all the states. The State Department has not yet issued any official statement in regards to that Dear Colleague Letter, but just bear in mind that a Dear Colleague Letter has no force of effect of law. It's simply an advisement that this might be coming. And we do currently have federal law that prohibits the federal government for directing the curriculum in schools, that we maintain local control of that. And so, as the federal law, its current form is, it's unlikely that legally there's any force of effect to the Dear Colleague Letter that got sent out. But the State Department has not yet issued a ruling on that, and most of my information is coming from the N.A.'s General Council. So with that relatively short report, after next week, I'll have a lot more to share with you, because again, our next board meeting is next Wednesday.
Can you speak a little bit on the Day on the Hill coming up?
Sure, yeah, the upcoming Day on the Hill. So that's an opportunity for, well, in specific, C.E.A. will have a Day on the Hill. There's also a Day on the Hill for residents, there's a Day on the Hill for superintendents. So the idea is that people come up to the Capitol Legislative Office Building to discuss whatever issues they want to discuss. This is again where if you're going to participate in something like that, certainly pick one or two talking points that you want to have about specific bills. If it's in education, I would highly suggest that you maybe reference some of the bills that I mentioned tonight. As an educator, I find it as a really fun day. Literally, teachers will run all over the place chasing down their representatives and go into hearings and having really great conversations, both in hearing rooms and in hallways and in the cafeteria. So it's a really great day to be able to, you know, participate in direct democracy and get your voice heard on a more one-to-one basis.
And where would somebody find those schedules?
They're all posted on the General Assembly website. If you, again, go through, just Google search the Connecticut General Assembly, you can, on one of the pull-down menus, it will give you a week at a glance. And every single day, it will tell you what committees are having hearings. If there's a special event listed, that will also be highlighted on the calendar. And if you happen to be an educator, both C.E.A. and A.F.T. have Days on the Hills that are scheduled.
Any board members have any questions for Ms. Rickett?
Thank you so much.
As always, thank you. All right, so here it is on the agenda, the Stratford High School Dance Team.
Just to remind the board, the new update on our request for field trips asks when the kids go out of state, that they come back and give us a little report on their experience.
So just moving forward to, if we grant a field trip to a class, maybe they could just pick a representative or two?
Yeah, this is actually not the whole team. This is just a representative of the team.
Good evening again. As you know, my name is Zoe Bernard, and I am here with fellow members of the Stratford High School Dance Team, Lauren Palucci, Natalia Hatemariam, and Grace Myron Dominguez, to share all the exciting news about our trip to UDA Nationals. The UDA camp was an amazing day for the Stratford High Dance Team. It was the day we found out we had earned a spot to compete at the Universal Dance Association High School National Dance Championship. No other team in school history has ever achieved this accomplishment. Over the next several months, our team and coach learned our Hunger Games-themed hip-hop routine and embarked on the journey to practice and perfect our performance. Simultaneously, our parents began the montaneous task of fundraising the twenty-four thousand dollars that would be needed to fund the season. After many months and lots of hard work, January thirtieth finally arrived, and our flight from Bradley International Airport was ready for departure. To say we were excited would be an understatement. The competition spirit was in the air as we were also sharing the flight with the Fairfield Ward Dance Team and another team from Springfield College. Once we arrived in Orlando, our hotel was a mere forty-five-minute bus ride away. After getting settled into the hotel, we had a short rehearsal to loosen up our muscles. It was important to our parents to really immerse ourselves in the experience, the environment, and engage in team bonding, so we headed to Disney Springs that night for a team selfie scavenger hunt.
We spent several hours waitfinding through one hundred and twenty acres for the items on our list. We learned a lot about the different metamorphosis that Disney Springs had gone through on its journey to become what it is today. Much like our team, it is in a constant state of improvement, and I appreciate the need for change as it leaves room to work in the future. Personally, looking back on the photos of the scavenger hunt, it reminds me that our time in high school was so short. I was grateful to have this opportunity with this amazing group of girls. It was fun to work together that night in a way that we hadn't before. There is no doubt that helped us shell in preparation for what was on deck for the next day. Friday, January thirty-first was finally here. We knew the assignment, and we were excited and ready. Our coach hurried us onto the bus when we were on our way to ESPN Wide World of Sports. The complex was awe-inspiring. To have the privilege to perform in this institute of athletic achievement made the butterflies in our stomachs flutter more fiercely. Our coach took us on a tour, and then we had a fifteen-minute rehearsal on one of the practice stages. We explored, took our well-deserved iconic World of Sports globe photos, and then headed back to the hotel to. and then headed back to the hotel to change our evening arrangements. We had two hours to center, change, and get to hair and makeup. Our minds couldn't help but jerk back to that massive stage that we would be on in a few short hours. This time, as we boarded the bus back to the Wide World of Sports, our moms were in tow, and our hype music was on our headphones. The next few hours felt like a blur and an eternity at the same time. As we finished our dance, we all breathed a collective sigh of relief. We did what we came to do. We performed our routines to the best of our ability. Our road to the national championship ended that night, but we knew that just by being there, we learned and took in so much to win and be the hip-hop champions of SWCs and to place second in states, which got us an invitation to the New England Region's competition, or paving a road that no other team from Stratford has ever been on.
In celebration, we all headed to Epcot before heading back to the hotel for a late dinner and lots of laughs. Even though we weren't able to experience the finals of such a world-renowned competition, we knew this has already pushed our dance team to the next level. SWCs were just a few days away, and this was the perfect amount of exposure and drive we needed to ultimately win the SWCs. Saturday's focus: friendship, recovery, and celebration. It was Magic Kingdom Day. We spent our day exploring many rides, and of course, according to our principal, the best ride in the world, Peter Pan. We were able to enjoy some relaxing cool time and hijinks during the afternoon. That evening was no doubt memorable. We were able to gather for a team and family dinner at the Whispering Canyon Cafe. We opted for boat transportation to the restaurant, and we were treated to a fireworks display over the lagoon. We laughed so hard, we cried, and the food was incredible. On our boat ride back to the bus, we were able to get a front-row view of the electrical water pageant. Moments like these, while spending time together as a team, makes all the hard work put into this trip so worthwhile. Surprise twist: one of our amazing dancers, Myra, was keeping a secret. It was her thirteenth, sixteenth birthday. Without hesitations, our moms sprung into action that day to give Myra the best last-minute sweet sixteen they could put together. However, Disney doesn't sell anything birthday-themed. No balloons, no shoes, no shirts, and no sign. Yet somehow, these moms were able to get a cake toilet paper that they use as streamers and found a random person that happened to have a handful of balloons so they could decorate the room to surprise her after dinner. It was the perfect end to the day. This truly does go to show the great lengths of dedication this team holds. We strive to embody this theme of making the best of every moment. We gave it our all, we give it our all one hundred percent of the time, including our performance at States this past weekend, which resulted in a second-place win, as well as securing our spot in the New England Regional Competition.
On Sunday, we were on our way back to the Wide World of Sports to watch the finals. Gazing upon the thirty-foot castle on the performance floor was a moment in time we all wished we could pause and rewind. It felt like we were walking out onto a movie set. We knew we were standing on the floor where great dance teams once stepped. That feeling was not lost on us. The ten teams we watched deserved to be there. There is no better feeling of reassurance than watching the best of the best perform in front of you. The rest of the day was spent exploring the countries at the Epcot World Showcase and participating in the after-hours party at Hollywood Studios. The park was closed to everyone but those who participated in the UDA competition and their families. We ran to ride after ride, danced in the streets, and shopped. We felt like VIPs. It felt like we were operating on autopilot as we traveled home on Monday. Coach and the moms were airport pros as they swooped in and navigated bag check, airport security, and finding comfortable napping locations. We are grateful that our coach thought of this experience for us. We are grateful to our parents for fundraising and paying for this experience. We are grateful for the school administrators and teachers who were so supportive of our venture. We are also grateful for the Board of Education and interim superintendent Borges who approved this trip. The amount of effort that it took to get us to Orlando is not lost on us. We know that it took a village, and we learned so much. We left Orlando with the energy to come home and win the SWC Championship, placed second at States and qualified to represent Connecticut at the New England Interscholastic Dance Championships on Saturday, March fifteenth, at Trumbull High School. We hope to see all of you there. But my goal as a junior captain of the team was to think long-term. We now know what we have to do next year, and we want to be one of the teams on that finals floor. Stratford High has a rich history of school spirit, and we want to be the team that helps rekindle that flame at our high school. Thank you all for your time, and we look forward to seeing you on March fifteenth at Trumbull High School.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Borges. SBS District. We will all go down to the floor.
Are you ready? Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us today as we review key data from this year. I first want to give a special shout-out to Cohort Twelve, Parent C, for being here. Special place in my heart. I hope you enjoy the presentation. We are excited to share insights that highlight student progress, celebrate successes, and guide our next steps. We are thrilled about the positive progress our students have made, and in areas where the data highlights opportunities for growth, we use these insights to refine our strategies and continuously improve instruction. This data is essential in guiding our decisions to enhance both academic achievement and student well-being. The NWEA is a computer adaptive assessment designed to measure students' growth and proficiency in key academic areas, primarily reading, math, language usage, and science. Stratford Public Schools utilizes the NWEA MAP Growth Test, which adjusts in difficulty based on student responses, providing a personalized assessment experience. We are analyzing winter twenty-twenty-four and winter twenty-twenty-five WEA results using matched cohorts to measure student growth, assess instructional impact, and guide district decision-making. By tracking the same group of students over time, we ensure accurate comparisons, identify trends, and evaluate the effectiveness of curriculum adjustments and interventions. This approach provides actionable insights to refine instruction, support student achievement, and drive continuous improvement. We're seeing promising trends in student achievement, with many grade levels demonstrating steady progress. These assessments give us valuable insights into how our instructional strategies and interventions are supporting learning. District-wide students have shown measurable growth from winter twenty-twenty-four to winter twenty-twenty-five cohort data. Math indicating a decrease in those at the fortieth percentile and below, so we want that data to decrease, and an increase in those sixty-first percentile and up. Reading, on the right-hand side, very similar, indicating a decrease in those at the fortieth percentile and below, and an increase of those sixty-first percentile and up. So the arrows are going in just the right direction where we want them. Our instructional approaches, including differentiated instruction and targeted interventions, are having a positive effect on our scores. These results affirm that our educators are effectively meeting students' needs while preparing them for long-term success. Our district overall growth percentile indicates how our students' academic progress compares to those, sorry, to that of students in other districts nationwide. So a fifty-six percentile growth in math means our students, on average, showed more growth than fifty-six percent of students in similar districts across the nation. A fifty-two percent growth in reading means our students demonstrated more growth than fifty-two percent of students in comparable districts. Since the fiftieth percentile represents typical growth, our math and reading growth are slightly above the national average, suggesting steady progress. However, continued focus on instructional strategies and interventions can help push growth even further.
Okay, going a little bit deeper. Again, we'll continue to look at the data through the lens of winter twenty-twenty-four to winter twenty-twenty-five. Our math data indicates that students are developing stronger problem-solving and analytical skills. This slide presents grade level, presents grade level achievement results from NWBA Math across grades three through twelve, highlighting positive growth in grades three, a four percent jump in grade five, a four percent jump, grade seven, eight percent. Eighth grade also saw an eight percent jump, ninth grade, twelve percent, tenth grade, eight percent, eleventh grade, ten percent, and twelfth grade, one percent. Notably, we observe dips in achievement in grades four and six. As we move forward, we will examine these slight declines, which was four percent in grade four and one percent in grade six. We'll look at those more closely to assess potential contributing factors and implications for instruction, intervention, and overall student support. Looking closer at reading, they also show steady improvement across multiple grade levels. Our literacy initiatives, including structured reading programs and differentiated support, are making a difference. The slide presents NWEA reading data for grades three through twelve, again, tracking cohorts from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five. This data highlights notable increases, including a five percent gain in grade three, four percent in grade four, another five percent in grade seven, eight percent in grade eight, six percent in grade nine, two percent in grade ten, and a significant nine percent growth in grade eleven. While we see positive trends across most grade levels, there are dips of three percent in grade five, two percent in grade six, and a two percent decline in grade twelve. These fluctuations will be examined further, just like math, to understand their instructional implications and potential areas for targeted support. Finally, the NWEA Science Assessment. This is a computer adaptive test aligned with next-generation science standards that measures students' understanding across physical sciences, life sciences, and earth and space sciences. It assesses scientific inquiry, reasoning, and critical thinking skills, again, adjusting difficulty based on student responses for a personalized and accurate measure of proficiency. This slide presents the science assessment's results for grades five and eight, the two grades in which it is given, comparing, again, differently than the previous slides. This is showing fall twenty-twenty-four, which is in the blue, to winter twenty-twenty-five, which is in the green. While eighth grade shows a strong increase from twenty-eight percent to thirty-four percent, fifth grade scores have dipped from thirty-five to thirty percent. This data has prompted us a deeper analysis of the assessment questions to ensure our alignment with our fifth-grade curriculum, and that is ongoing.
So the DIBL's eighth edition is a research-based assessment used to measure foundational literacy skills in students from kindergarten through eighth grade. It is designed to identify students at risk for reading difficulties and help identify students needing additional support early and sharing targeted instruction. DIBL's eighth edition is the state's recognized internal assessment aimed to support our district's commitment to early literacy development and data-driven instruction, ensuring that all students build strong reading skills. Although you will see grades K to three on the next slide, we are working towards training grades four to six and eventually grades seventh and eighth to fill the gaps for necessary literacy skills. I'm pleased to report that early literacy data from DIBL's highlights strong foundational reading skills. You can see each grade grew in the foundational skills grades K three for last year to now. Kindergarten went from forty-three percent last winter to fifty-eight percent this winter. First grade from thirty-nine to forty-four percent. Yes, sorry, from fall to winter, not winter to winter, sorry. And here are the differences: forty-three to fifty-eight, thirty-nine to forty-four, forty-eight to fifty-one, and the forty-six to forty-seven for grade three. These results reinforce the importance of our early literacy initiatives in ensuring students are on track by grade three. So we are on an upward trajectory.
Okay, a lot of us are familiar with the PSATs and SATs. These scores reflect steady academic preparedness, particularly in key college readiness areas. This data helps us identify areas of additional support while also celebrating the students who are exceeding expectations. PSAT assesses reading, writing, and math skills, providing students and educators with insights into academic strengths and areas for improvement, while the SAT evaluates reading, writing, and language and math. Many colleges use SAT scores for admissions and scholarship decisions, though an increasing number are adopting test optional policies. Today, we will be looking at our primary PSAT data. Just to explain what you're looking at, to the right is our current eleventh graders. The green represents the test they took as eleventh graders. The dark blue is the PSAT they took as tenth graders. And then the light blue is the PSAT eight-nine test that they took as freshmen. In the middle there, you see our current tenth graders with their, the dark blue represents the test they took this year, and the light blue, the PSAT they took last year. And then, of course, the class of twenty-twenty-eight, our current ninth graders, only have that one data point. But this slide does present cohort trends over multiple years, demonstrating consistent academic growth. Just some information, the light blue bar, as I said, represents the ninth-grade PSAT eight-nine. It's a slightly easier assessment, designed just for eighth and ninth graders with fewer questions and a different structure than the PSAT. It's just testing what they know in ninth grade. This year's ninth graders also took a newly revised version of the test, which is said to be more comprehensive, whereas our tenth and eleventh graders took a different test when they were freshmen. As I said, the dark blue represents their tenth-grade PSAT scores, which is a different assessment from the ninth-grade one. And the green bar serves as a benchmark for college readiness, being the eighth-grade PSAT. These results suggest that our long-term instructional strategies and support systems are effectively fostering student achievement with strong continuity. The continuity, no, twelve, twenty-five percent as juniors, I'm sorry, as sophomores, and twenty-five percent as eleventh graders does show a strong continuity of learning across the grade levels, indicating academic progress. Looking at this, the EBRW, which is the Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, looking at it a little closer, again, it's represented the same way on the graph with our eleventh graders to the right, tenth graders in the middle, and ninth graders to the left, also shows an improvement in critical thinking analysis and written communication. This aligns with our emphasis on literacy across content areas, ensuring students are prepared for both academic and professional writing. Encouragingly, students who have engaged in additional reading and writing support programs also show significant gains. As I said, this presents cohort trends emphasizing the importance of consistency from tenth to eleventh grade. And you notice in the, I'm sorry, the tenth, our current tenth grader showing growth from twenty-eight percent as ninth graders to forty-two percent, highlighting significant progress. And in eleventh grade, we see a slight one percent increase, again, reinforcing that our long-term instructional strategies and support systems are fostering student achievement. For math, the data follows a similar pattern to the previous assessments, along with the ninth-grade PSAT eight-nine measuring skills aligned to eighth and ninth-grade standards. The tenth-grade PSAT shifts to the eleventh-grade benchmarks. The data shows consistency in twelfth grade over time, but that fifteen percent, by no means are we happy with that. It does highlight the need for our continued efforts to raise math achievement across all grade levels. To address this, we are continuing to focus on strengthening conceptual understanding over rote memorization, ensuring that students develop true math fluency. Differentiated instruction remains. Differentiated instruction remains a priority and allowing, allowing all students to reach their potential through targeted support. We use these results to analyze our performance trends, to guide instruction, to adjust our pacing, and to address the skill gaps. Targeted interventions would include small group instruction, tutoring, and enrichment opportunities, and all these will ensure that all students continue to, excuse me, continue to grow. And of course, professional development is always a key to equip our educators with high-impact strategies to support differentiated learning.
I will finish up our presentation with a few key areas. So I am going to begin by presenting our current attendance data through February twenty twenty-five. As some of you may be aware, we are now in our second year working with our family and engagement specialists, and we have expanded our LEAP program. This is the first year in which we have had an O ninety-two administrator overseeing this effort, and we really appreciate that. Our ongoing collaboration with BARK, which is the Behavior and Attendance Review Committee, and SARB, which is our School Attendance Review Board, groups, along with our community partners, have been instrumental in addressing absenteeism in our district. Attendance remains a critical indicator of student engagement and academic success. The data we're reviewing tonight represents a key metric for evaluating the impact of our attendance initiatives, particularly the work of our Family Engagement Specialists, our LEAP program, our BARK, and our SARB committees. You're missing one slide, so I will get that one to you later, and I'm not going to bore you with what I have to say about it, since you don't have it in front of you. But this slide speaks directly to our secondary chronic absenteeism at the schools, our three-year comparison of chronic absenteeism in our secondary schools, and to be clear, chronic absenteeism is, is defined as students missing ten percent or more of school days. The most significant finding here is the downward trend across all four secondary schools. Specifically, a shout-out goes to Stratford High School, because they have decreased their absenteeism from forty-two point one percent in February of twenty twenty-three down to twenty-four point seven percent in February of twenty twenty-five. So great job, Stratford High. That is a remarkable seventeen point four percent point reduction. Benell High School is also showing improvement from thirty-two point six percent to twenty-six point six percent over the same period. Flood has maintained relatively stable rates, and Worcester Middle School has seen modest improvements. The red arrow on the slide emphasizes this positive downward trend. The most dramatic improvement is at Stratford High School, which had the highest rate in twenty twenty-three, but has shown consistent year-over-year reductions. The timing of these improvements do align with the implementation of our Family Engagement Specialist Program, the increased coordination, and being provided by having an administrator overseeing the program as well. This is your chronic absenteeism at your elementary schools. Our elementary schools show similar promising trends in chronic absenteeism. Most elementary schools show year-over-year improvements. Chapel has decreased from twenty-six point eight percent to nineteen percent over the three-year period. Franklin has improved from twenty-six point four percent to eighteen point six percent. Second Helene has shown significant progress, decreasing from twenty-five point two percent to seventeen point two percent. Johnson, which had the highest rate in twenty twenty-three at thirty point six percent, is now at twenty-four point four percent, a six point two percentage point reduction. The red circles on the chart highlight the improvements at Chapel, Franklin, Second Helene, and Johnson. The downward trend line indicates consistent improvement across all elementary schools. These improvements demonstrate our targeted interventions combined with family engagement efforts are beginning to yield results. Now I'm going to review some of our behavior data as of February twenty twenty-five. This data provides valuable insights into the effectiveness of our code of conduct implementation and our restorative practices, initiatives that we have been working diligently to establish across the district. Behavioral data is critical indicator of our school climate and the effectiveness of our approach to student conduct. The data we're reviewing tonight demonstrates how our code of conduct and restorative practices are influencing student behavior and disciplinary outcomes. This slide shows our in-school suspension ISS and our out-of-school suspension OSS data, comparing twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school years across the months of August to January. For in-school suspensions, we see consistent decrease in ISS incidences from the previous year to the current year. As you can see, August incidents go from one to zero. September does show an increase from sixty to sixty-seven. This can be attributed to the adjustment period of the beginning of the school year. October shows a reduction from a hundred and twelve down to ninety-nine. November from a hundred to eighty-three. December had the largest decrease from seventy to forty-five. January shows a reduction from eighty-one to fifty-nine. For out-of-school suspensions, the data shows substantial reductions across all months. September decreased from seventeen to twelve, October from twenty to nine, November from thirty to ten, December shows reductions from nineteen to eleven, and January from twenty-four to eleven. These reductions in both ISS and OSS incidents demonstrate positive impact of the code of conduct and restorative practice. Where we're seeing the greatest decrease is in repeat offenses. So in the past year, students would repeatedly make the same error, causing suspension after suspension. These reductions, we still have kids making poor choices, but they're not making the same poor choice over and over again. We have a federal stop rate that works directly to reduce school incidences of discipline by providing special intervention when students are out-of-school suspended. So this slide shows the Alternative Instructional Program, AIP, placements from September through January of the current school year. These are specifically for disciplinary reasons, meaning you received a five-to-ten-day out-of-school suspension. In September, we had sixteen placements, October fifteen, November nineteen, December, December sixteen, and January twenty-two. The increase in January reflects the commitment to providing appropriate interventions for students who need additional support. We don't see an increase in numbers as a negative. We see it as demonstrating a proactive approach to duress, to addressing behavioral challenges. Through AIP placements, we're able to provide targeted interventions while maintaining positive learning environments in our schools. Our restorative practice approach is evident in how we are using AIP, not simply as a consequence, but as an opportunity for students to receive targeted support they need while working towards successful reintegration into their school environments. When they go to AIP for an out-of-school suspension, instead of being at home in an out-of-school suspension, they have a social worker, special education teachers, tutors, and an administrator there, working with the student on the choice that got them there, and how they're going to go back and repair that damage. When students return to school, they meet with their administrative staff and talk about how they're not going to repeat that same act. It's a powerful program, and that's what has helped us reduce the number of incidences being repeated on a regular basis. Another piece of data that we like to look at to help make sure we are responding appropriately is incident type. So this slide breaks down the behavior, oops, hit a button, there you go. This slide breaks down the behavioral incidences by category, giving us valuable insight into the specific challenges we're addressing. This is always a question, so I'm going to try to clarify it, because as you can see, the top two are physical altercation and fighting altercation, and someone might think, what's the difference, right? Fighting altercation typically results in some type of an injury between two or more students with each other. A physical altercation might be, I pushed over a desk, or I pushed by somebody, not necessarily set up specifically to have that fight, okay? Other notable category areas are skipping class, inciting fights or riots, threats and intimidation, or leaving school grounds. This breakdown helps us target our interventions more effectively. For example, the high percentage of physical altercations and fighting highlights the need for us to focus on continued conflict resolution skills, restorative circles to address interpersonal conflicts, and social-emotional learning opportunities. It is worth noting, we have several areas that are very low that have been higher in the past, for example, drugs, alcohol, tobacco. They are relatively low at two point nine percent, and e-cigarette possession is only at one point one percent, suggesting that some of the interventions for those areas have been working at a faster rate than other areas. So in conclusion, we suggest that our approach for creating school environments where expectations are clear, consequences are fair and instructive, and students have opportunities to learn, to learn from their mistakes and repair their harm, are starting to work in the appropriate direction. One more area. This is the last area I'll present on tonight. This is our DESA, which is Social Emotional Screening Results. DESA stands for the Deveraux Student Strength Assessment. It's our district-wide tool for measuring students' social and emotional competencies. This data complements our attendance and behavior metrics by providing insight into the underlying social-emotional skills that support positive student outcomes. DESA is a standardized, strength-based assessment that measures eight key social-emotional competencies in children from kindergarten through high school. These competencies include self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, relationship skills, goal-directed behavior, personal responsibility, decision-making, and optimistic thinking. DESA helps us identify students' social and emotional strength areas where they may need support, and this screening tool aligns with the code of conduct and restorative practices. This slide shows our district-wide DESA results comparing fall and winter assessments from twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. The data is categorized in three rating levels: the Need for Instruction, Typical, and Strength. Looking at the results in the fall, fourteen percent of our students were identified as having a need for instruction, sixty-seven percent fell in the typical range, and nineteen percent demonstrated social-emotional skills as a strength. By winter twenty twenty-five, the Need for Instruction category decreased to nine percent, that's the direction we want to see it going in. The Typical category decreased slightly, which happens when the Strength category increases. Okay, so your Strength category increased to twenty-six percent. This positive shift demonstrates that our social-emotional learning initiatives are having measurable impact. The reduction in students needing instruction and the increase in students showing strength indicates that our approach to social-emotional learning are effectively developing students' competencies. And I want to be clear with the DESA that you're seeing right now, this is teacher data. So the teachers fill out a DESA on each individual student they have contact with, and that's what brings your scores or concerns to light. So this is also breaking down your DESA by grade level. So you have kindergarten through twelfth grade. This slide looks across K through twelve, the percentage of students in Need for Instruction category ranges from a low at four percent in grades four, seven, eight, and eleven to a high of fifteen percent in grade ten. The typical range is pretty consistent across most, most grades, ranging between sixty and seventy-seven percent. The Strength category has some interesting variations, with notable strengths in grade four, grade six, grade seven, and grade twelve. It's worth noting that grade ten shows the highest percentage of students needing instruction, fifteen percent. And if you do your research about adolescent development and social-emotional challenges, the year that students have the greatest social-emotional challenge is tenth grade. It's a very difficult year for our kids, and they definitely need a little extra tender loving care. So now you just went from the fall scores by grade level to the winter scores by grade level. So it is showing you the same thing, and what you're seeing is that we have showed a steady increase, again, with that exception of that tenth grade. Okay, so what this data tells us is we need to do something a little bit more for those tenth graders at this point in the winter. Okay. This year, we experimented. DESA allows you to do a student self-report, but only for high schoolers. So our high school students did their own evaluation on how they think their social and emotional well-being is. This slide shows that ninth graders felt thirty-nine percent of them needed instruction for social-emotional learning, fifty-five percent were typical, and six showed a strength. Ten, and this is important, acknowledged that forty-one percent need instruction. Fifty-three percent are typical, six percent showed strength. Eleventh grade, thirty-two percent for instruction, sixty typical, eight percent strength. Twelfth grade, twenty-seven percent in need of instruction, sixty-two percent typical, eleventh strength. It's important to note that the self-report percentages in the Need for Instruction category are significantly higher than the teacher assessments. This discrepancy is common in the DESA, as adolescents tend to be much more critical about their self-evaluation. However, it's also valuable insight into how our students perceive their own social and emotional learning. The data shows a trend of improvement as students progress through high school, with seniors showing the lowest percentage of self-reported need for instruction. This is the same now, just in the winter. So other than tenth grade, each group perceived their group as improving and showing that they have grown in their social-emotional well-being. So again, pretty much highlights for us that we need to do a little bit more for our students in tenth grade. One more. So before we accept questions from the Board of Ed, I want to give an important disclaimer. It's important to remember that data represents a snapshot in time. Every day, we work, we are committed to supporting our students, and we are encouraged by the progress that we see. At the same time, we remain realistic, knowing that data may fluctuate, and when it does, it is our role as leaders to respond thoughtfully with targeted strategies. Reaching our goals will take time, collaboration, and persistence, but we are in this together, and we are ensuring that every student has the opportunity to succeed. So we give you that disclaimer, because we want to make sure you understand that a piece of data, even though we're, we're very pleased with the upward progress, it is a moment in time, it is a snapshot in time, and we need to continue to be responsive, regardless of the direction the data goes, because our students deserve the best. They deserve the best we can give them. So we are going to continue to dig into this and make sure that it is driving the direction that we move in every day. So we thank you for taking the time to look through our data presentation. If you guys want, we can move back up there for your questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. Oh, I just wanted to just say I appreciate Dr. Urey, Dr. Piazet, you using the matched cohorts. So often, typically when we look at data and they compare, they compare like last year's third grade to this year's third grade. You're not looking at the same students, you're not looking at the same kind of results. So it's nice to see that you're looking at the same group of children and comparing their growth from year to year. My only question with that was, for instance, when it was like saying like, like third grade, we were seeing their last year's to this year's, is it this year's current grade or was it their? For any of them, I believe it showed like, because it was showing the growth of third in like, fall of, or winter of twenty twenty-four to winter of twenty twenty-five, was, is it like?
When we share it with you, you'll see at the top of each of the slides, there were a couple that the test was only given in the fall and the winter, so that's all we had, but if we had the matched cohort, we used it, and it says winter to winter. And then you'll know that it was last year's third graders to this year's third grade to their same grade, the same.
Right, that's what I was just trying to figure out, like, is it, is it like the current third grader, so it was like their second grade score to their third grade score?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I just needed clarification, okay.
Like not on the test that we only gave in the fall and the winter.
When you were presenting the, the NWBA data from the fall and the, and the winter for math reading and science, it looked like, like the, the. math reading and science, it looked like, like the, the upper elementary grades were really struggling. I know you guys are, you're going in and you're good, you're going to be checking and, and seeing what's, what, not what's going on, but what they're struggling with. Can you let us know if you, if you find something, an inconsistency or some, find out what they're struggling with? Because, you know, as a, as a elementary teacher myself, I'm 3rd, I'm curious what, what my, what bumps they're hitting and why, and why they're missing the, missing the, the concepts.
Absolutely, and so are we.
I want to know when, when you guys learn.
Yeah, and we'll let you know. I think that it's promising that we are doing some of the pre-fundational skills, and 4 to 6 is really working hard on those skills because that's not typically in their curriculum. So it's shaking them up to really fill the gaps, so, I mean, the hope is we see improvement, but if we figure out anything more specific, we can absolutely share that.
Great, thanks.
Just, but now, we?
Yeah, just wondering if we can get a copy of that presentation to kind of stew over a little more.
Yep, we'll, we'll, they'll present us with, with a copy.
Thank you.
Can you give us one example of possible strategy for the 10th graders?
Yes, I can. So in, inside the DESA, it's easier if I can show it to you, Bill, but inside the DESA, there are Tier 2 and Tier 3 strategies for behaviors. So what we have to be able to do is look at the 10th grade advisory times, look at the school counselor's availability, look at the social worker's availability, because those students are going to need the targeted lessons that are in there, because what they're doing is they're, they're saying, hey, we need a little help, and we're even admitting it, right? We're doing our own self-assessment to say that we're having a hard time regulating these basic emotions that we need to be successful in life. So we're going to be looking at those lessons that are already provided for us in the DESA program to be able to target for the students, whether it is the group lesson that happens during advisory period, or whether it is an individual or small group pulled to specifically target it. So remember, when each student takes the assessment, we have a breakdown in evaluation for that particular student. So we need to make sure that we're addressing it. So now that the high schools, they just finished that winter assessment, and now that they have that data, the principals will be looking at that to help implement. But the strategies you would use are already in there. They're in the actual program, and they're separated specifically. So when you see a student, it'll say, go to Strategy 2 for student relationships. They have a pull-up, the lesson that should be taught to that student.
Thank you.
One other question regarding the behavior data with out-of-school suspensions. On the one graph where it shows like how many each month, and then we saw how those students who were then utilizing the AIP program, were those students that were sent to AIP so that when they have an out-of-school suspension, they're not just home? Are they still counted in our out-of-school suspensions, or does that not?
No, they're counted.
Okay.
I was curious. They're still out-of-school suspended, but there's a code for the state that says out-of-school suspended with education, because we are sending their work over and we are making sure they are provided an education in a, in a safe environment.
Okay, thank you.
Just, but now, you have any questions?
Yeah, just to piggyback on the AIP data, the, the numbers went from, say, 16 to 22 one month. Is that an increase, or is that totally different students, or is that, how long are the students tending to spend in that AIP program?
So in order to be issued a placement at AIP, your suspension has to be above five days. So it's a five-day to 10-day out-of-school suspension per law. No student can be there for longer than 10 days unless they are expelled, and an expulsion can be up to 180 days. Your monthly incidents are different incident numbers each month. Okay, so you could assume that each of those children received 10 days out of school. That would be the max they could receive.
So I, I would just say, I'm like, you know, over the last year and a half, some of the programs, some of the changes you and your staff have implemented seem to be showing positive results. I've always been very impressed with your, your passion for what you do, it was gorgeous, and your willingness to try new things, look at different ways, create different ways to improve it, like for instance, allowing the students to self-assess, which I think is a great tool. It takes a creative mind, somebody who's, even if that information might look bad, it, it's a good tool for you and your staff to look at and to assess. But what I hear is through this process, you're constantly reviewing and, and updating your processes to make it better for the students. I think the numbers show some great growth, but I, as I hear you give the presentation, I hear that you are creating ways to even make it better. As, as you go through the process, you self-assess and adjust to make, to make it even better than, than what you do for our students.
I think what's really important to be clear about, and what's really important for us as educators and people who don't work in education maybe don't see this the same way, but there is no bad data. Okay? Data is what informs us on how we want to educate our students. So good or bad data is not how we look at it, we look at it as the data that's going to drive what we do every day. So even when students fill out data, we look at that and say, we need to do better with that. Or we're seeing a growth in math, that's good, not good enough, what else can we do? Right? Data is what drives us to do better every day. And I am lucky that I have a team that's willing to dig in and look at that, that you have administrators that are willing to dig in and look at that, and you have teachers that are looking at it every day, trying to make sure they can do it better. So it's, it's about how we're using that data, and it's right there in front of us. Data does you no good if all you're going to do is throw it up on a board.
Well, I commend you on, on your accomplishments, I commend you on your team, and, and I look forward to what else we see with the overall, so thank you for helping. Do any other questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's executive report.
And all of our executive reports, with the exception of the chief operating officer, the assistant superintendents and superintendents are going to be very short or nonexistent tonight because we just did a huge presentation. I have just a couple shout-outs. I do want to congratulate our Stratford High School dance team for their incredible achievement, first, winning first place in the SWC for the first time in so many years. And they got second place in the CIAC in their small hip-hop division. So their work, hard work and dedication have made Stratford very proud. And I also want to express a deep appreciation for our cohort 12 parent C members. Your commitment to this program and partnership with our district exemplifies the power of collaboration. The way we engage with our parents is key, hence your keychains, to student success, and your dedication to this work does not go unnoticed. So thank you for your time, for your sacrifice, and your, your belief in this important initiative, and we appreciate you being here tonight. And that's it.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes. I do have a couple of things to share with you. I did attend a CASBO workshop on February 7th, and there were a great number of, there were a significant number of great session topics, but the most interesting involved a discussion of the Connecticut's Education Cost Sharing Grant, or the ECS grant that we speak about so often. We were provided with an overview of grant calculation by our state partners. The session provided a clear and practical understanding of the ECS formula. Kevin Chambers of the State Department of Education really did an outstanding job explaining the various components of the formula, how the funding is calculated, and the implications for town and school budgets. And he took time to discuss the key factors in the calculation, such as student need, district wealth, and state funding adjustments. I've provided each of you with a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that was shared, but they also put it onto the state website, so it is available for anyone who really wants to break down on that calculation, because oftentimes there are questions on the fairness of it. Many of my colleagues, it was filled with school business officials attending that particular workshop that day, really commended Mr. Chambers, because it was probably the first time, and I've been doing this for a long time, that we walked away with kind of a good understanding of what is involved in that calculation, and also the emphasis on data. And we're always talking about data in a school and district, but the need for us to be as thorough and accurate as possible with our free and reduced applications, for example, the information that we're reporting to the state, as well as the information that our town is providing to the federal government, because there is the wealth factors as well. So it was very worthwhile, and if you have a moment to review it or review it on the website, I think you'll get something out of it. And then I just wanted to share that earlier today, I participated in a virtual workshop on the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or the IDEA Grant. I know we've been talking a lot about special education over the past couple of months, but the session actually discussed IDEA in 2025, noting that this grant is nearing its 50th anniversary this year. They were emphasizing that it has been around for almost 50 years, and there are many of us still advocating for full funding of the program to meet the needs of students with disabilities, that was actually, the full funding was intended when it was passed nearly a half century ago. So it's really somewhat disheartening that we are still trying to get this funding for us, and we're still trying to fight this fighting. But we discussed the issue of the cost of providing special ed services, and of course, that has become a pressing concern for school districts nationally, especially as the number of students who receive services under IDEA has increased so significantly. And it was stressed that inadequate funding for SPED can force funding cuts to other programs and services, which is exactly what we've been experiencing statewide and locally. Panelists included representatives from the IDEA Full Funding Coalition, which quite frankly, I had never heard of until I participated in this, and their mission is dedicated to fulfilling the funding promise for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So I did provide you with copies of their one-page overview of the IDEA Full Funding Act and a snapshot of the IDEA Full Funding Shortfall by state. And they do have a wealth of information on their website, so another one you might want to check out in your spare time. I realize that you devote a lot of time to us, and we do appreciate it. But as we all have been hearing, this topic of special education costs has moved to the forefront of state budget discussions, and we are hoping for some much-needed relief and hopefully legislative changes in the not-too-distant future. And we did hear some from Ms. Record today, and Ms. Gorgeous, and Ms. Carol Fabian as well. So Heather and I, of course, will continue to keep you updated as we receive information from our professional organizations in the state, but it is reassuring to know that there is a lot of discussion on the topic, and it really is long overdue, in my opinion. So just wanted to share the information of what I've actually learned over the past
And then we'll go to our assistant superintendent's report, and then we'll, if anybody has questions.
And they have done their report already tonight.
Well done, thank you. Is there any questions for any of our administrators? Now, moving on, I will look for acceptance of the meeting minutes from January 27, 25, February 3, 25, and February 10, 25. So moved by Ms. O'Brien.
Second.
Second by Ms. Angela Powers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Look for a motion to approve the personnel assignments.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Carol Fabian.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Angela Powers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We have no budget transfers, so we'll move on to the second read for the school attendance, All right, so I know we had some, some changes, I think, which were highlighted in the Ed. Is there any other discussion on that sound policy? None? I'd look for a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Angela Powers.
Second.
Second by Ms. O'Brien. Any discussion? We'll call vote, Ms. Angela Powers.
Yes.
Ms. Corby?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Pedell?
Yes.
Chair of OTS, motion passes unanimously. Uh, next on the list. First read status, with favorable recommendation, board of ed policy, the use of artificial intelligence in education. Ms. Kowalski, would you like to come up and, and kind of give us some guidance on, on how we got to here?
Thanks for having me this evening. This is, this policy in front of you is the collaborative work of our AI task force under the direction of CES representative Luke Forschaw, and comprised of a member of administrators, teachers, board of ed members, and parents in district. We've worked together to kind of explore the topic of artificial intelligence and discuss what that, that could mean positively and negatively in terms of an educational impact in Stratford. So I want to just prepare some notes and go through where this policy came from, so you understand the roots, and then we'll look for any questions if you have any. So it's, we utilized the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, they have a policy on generative AI, as well as the state of Connecticut policy on AI in the workforce to provide some guidance and inform our decision-making in terms of what this policy would look like in the classrooms. On one hand, the policy from CADE focuses primarily on education, whereas the state policy provided us some really good insight in terms of procurement, oversight, and continuous revisiting of whatever that policy looks like. We also made sure we referenced and tied in the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, because we wanted to make sure that our policy that we put forward supported best practices in terms of safety and security for our kids and had legal grounding as well. We then wanted to also make sure we tied in Portrait of a Graduate and the Stratford Public School Code of Conduct to make sure that the policy fit within what is already established in our community. Our biggest challenge here was making the policy vague enough to encompass artificial intelligence, but also specific enough to be something that was actionable. So it's got seven sections to it. The first two sections focus on the policy's purpose and give some general guidelines, and it kind of explains in very basic form what artificial intelligence is. And then we go into more specific usages for both staff and students. The staff side focuses more on instructional practices, and the student section focuses more on academic integrity and elaborates on guardrails for use. We offer some sample permitted uses in the policy as well. Some of the bigger sections that towards the end look at oversight, continuous improvement, and the establishment of an AI task force. This is not a policy that's going to be written in stone. It needs to remain fluid, because this, this is discussing a platform and a resource that is constantly changing, and so it is up to us to look at procurement in terms of what platform makes sense for Stratford, and how are we going to revisit it to ensure that we are compliant with privacy and data security, with ethical and moral standards related to technology use, and to make sure that we are revisiting the policy to make sure it makes sense for us in Stratford. That task force would review and report back to the Board of Ed Policy Committee with recommendations, prospective changes, et cetera. And then that could be the, like, starting point for a greater community conversation, because one of the big parts that came up from our collaborative work with the task force was, this means one thing for our, for our Board of Education and for our students, but what does this mean for our greater community? So that, that could be a, a group of working people who now take a look at what that means for our school system and then greater Stratford as well.
So I, I was on this, this subcommittee, the task force, like Ms. Kowalski said, this would, because AI is, and I have no idea, computer illiteracy most of the time, but I had no idea that AI was, I thought we were in the early stages of AI, but AI is so far advanced. We kind of closed our, started in the sand for a year and ignored it, but we came to the realization that we would need to, to address this so our students wouldn't be left behind by it, and it didn't turn into a, a problem our cell phones have become so. But we wanted a set of parameters that we could work with it, because AI changes so quickly. But we wanted a set of parameters that we could work within, because AI changes so quickly. We couldn't set hard, fast rules, but we needed to have some guardrails to work through it. And that's why also we created the task force, which would be continually on a regular basis. Currently, the task force has, I think, three components: the policy, the community.
We have a communications section of the task force, we have a professional development section of the task force, and then we have the policy section of the task force. And we truly did make this task force filled with people from all, it was intentional that we had Mr. Henry come on here, because we knew he was not technologically savvy. And so we had everything from people that love technology and live and breathe it. We had a parent who works for Google that is part of it, as well as our administrators that love technology, and our teachers, our administrators that are not so fond of it. So the committee was large enough to get a voice from everyone, and that's why we ended up with such a comprehensive policy coming forward to the board, instead of just the simple policies that we grabbed from different places, because we wanted to make sure we encompassed everything. I'm true, I was not part of the group that made the policy, but they worked very hard, and Mr. Kowalski was definitely key in that. He is, he is a technology lover, and he has played and worked with a lot of these different aspects already.
And to Heather and Mike's point, we're kind of in a holding pattern when we look at communication and professional development, because we have to have a policy that can guide that. So that's, that's why we're here tonight. And we also recognize that, once we adopt and move forward with the policy, it's going to have a trickle-down effect on other elements within the policy subcommittee as well. Like, for example, how does this impact academic integrity? How will students cite use of artificial intelligence with their work? And so then looking at the creation of academic integrity policies and revisiting some of our existing policies as well.
So one of the components was, or is, to this task force is the communication piece. Most people in the community are likely to either be used to AI, and so getting the message out to parents, how they deal with AI at home, how they help their kids address it, how they ensure their safeguards in place so that it's being used appropriately, these are all the things that this task force will be looking at in addition. Also, the policy committee was tasked a month ago to start to look at what policies we have that this AI task, this AI policy will have. They've got, I mean, the policy book is about this thing, they've got a lot of order the way through it, and they've come up with about 20 different policies that this will have an impact on. So getting this in place so we can start, it's much bigger than this policy. It impacts everything we're going to be doing within the school environment, whether it's homework, or, you know, it's a whole host of things. But anyway, we want to get this in place. We think it's a comprehensive, well-written document, and we'd like to see it passed at least for a first read this evening. If anybody has any questions.
I think Ms. Borges also said at our, at our policy meeting, we're, at the moment, we're limited by state, by state direction what, what AI apps we are allowed to use. But as we, as we choose those apps, some of the programs that we purchase and pay for each year would go away.
Yeah, so essentially, a couple different things. One, there's a lot of data privacy. So when you're talking about what you can use, the state approves different programs that can be used at school districts. They're very limited right now. However, what those programs do, it would be a net cost for us. So we're not worried about whether or not we go with Magic School or Magic School AI, because what they do would then eliminate the need for three other or four other programs that we're paying for individually. So it's a, it's a swap-out, you know, for us to have it. But we're waiting for, you know, we know it's the first read, and we're hoping that eventually this one will get passed so that we can really start to dig into this.
Any other questions?
I'd just say thanks, Brian, for taking the lead on this and for keeping up the great work.
Truly, it was a collaborative effort. We, we worked as a team, we got a lot of different perspectives on it, and that informed our decision-making. So it was a pleasure working with everyone, I'll admit.
And they got to use AI a little bit to develop this, so it was pretty cool.
Watch Ms. Borges write a song.
I did. I learned that. My son really enjoys it.
We, Dr. Piazza actually came up with a podcast that we could share out with the Board of Ed after, if you'd prefer listening as opposed to reading through the policy again. It's an AI-created podcast about the policy.
So I would look for a motion to accept as a first read. So moved. Moved by Mr. O'Brien. Seconded by Ms. Cormier. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. And if they don't scoop you up on the AI task force, I might drag you into the policy committee. All right. School attendance, number five, first read status, policy committee with a favorable recommendation, grants, donations, and gifts.
I'll take it. Pretty straightforward policy that we need. As, I came to a few months ago and said, we're receiving these larger gifts, and there's no specific policy in place for us to be able to accept them, no amount put in place in which I need to bring forward to the board. We definitely want to accept these amazing gifts, whether they are things to enhance some of our programs, or whether they are food or clothing donations for our students. We just need some guide rails in place so we know what has to be brought to you and what we can accept directly. So this is, again, a Cade policy that's been updated a little bit by the policy committee and sent to you with a favorable recommendation. If you have any questions, come here.
Any questions?
I have a question. The crowdfunding. Specifically, would that be programs or donation sites like Donors Choose?
Yeah, yes.
So.
Go ahead.
In order for teachers to use like their Donors Choose, like to create a Donors Choose project, they would need to get it approved by their principal?
Yes. And we ran into a couple situations in Stratford that were challenging. Someone had done a Donors Choose project, and it had to do with equipment, like actual pieces of equipment, or iPads, or things that were not compatible. So that's why we need to make sure that what you put in there gets approved by your principal and is something that is able for us to use.
Any other questions? I would look for a motion to accept as a first read. So moved. Moved by Ms. Kennedy. Seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number six, policy for first read status, secular offenders of school property. The policy committee, it came from the policy committee with a favorable recommendation.
Yep, we brought this to the policy committee, because again, as we are going through each of Stratford's policies, we are seeing holes where things are missing, and we don't have an identified policy in an area. So this is one of them, and as a Board of Education, this is an important policy in order for us to be able to make sure we keep everybody safe and follow these legal obligations.
And I think part of the intent was to set up some criteria that would be more easily to follow.
Yes. We need the guidelines and the guardrails so that our principals have something to work with, and I have a way to guide them that is binding through our policy.
And then this again was a Cade policy?
Yep, this was a Cade policy. And as you can see, the edits in there came from your policy committee. So your policy committee recommended some edits, and you are receiving it after their recommended edits.
I think one of the, one of the things we've tried to change is going from parent slash legal guardian.
We want to be more inclusive, so we went from just saying parent to legal guardian, and we want to be gender-inclusive, so they replaced his, her, or they.
Any questions, comments? Look for a motion to accept as a first read. So moved. Ms. Cormier. Seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number seven, policy first read status, minimum duty, minimum duty-free lunch periods for teachers. Policy committee with a favorable recommendation.
This is a mandate. So we gave it to you with the Cades recommendation. You have to have a policy that has a minimum duty-free lunch period for teachers of 30 minutes. It's required, so we brought it to you, because you're going to need to update that. Not really much to discuss on this one.
It is just codifying.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Look for a motion to accept as a first read. By Ms. O'Brien. Seconded by Ms. Peddell. Get you in there. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Policy first reads, there's a task force, it came from the policy committee with a favorable recommendation.
Again, this is a Cade policy that we need to have in place. This, right now, definitely needs a good close eye to make sure that we are, some of you have students in high school, so you'll be able to know whether we are currently doing everything within this policy we are required to. So it is important for you guys to take a close look at this and see if it needs any edits or amendments, but it is, again, another required policy that we had that was missing.
Any further discussions? Comments? Look for a motion to accept as a first read. By Ms. Peddell. Seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right. So I will look for a motion to accept and forward. We're moving on to number nine, a motion to accept it forward to the mayor's office, town council, the fiscal year 2025-2026, itemized estimate of expenditures in the amount of $132,953.9, I'm sorry, $132,953,937, which represents an increase of $3,451,212, or 2.66 over last year's allocation, as forwarded by the finance committee with a favorable recommendation. Moved by Ms. Peddell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Any discussion? Hearing none? Look for roll call vote. Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Peddell?
Yes.
Ms. Peddell votes yes. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Angela Blowick?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. If I could, I'd just like to read a quick letter to the mayor, Mayor Boyne, and mayors, and members of the Stratford Town Council. On behalf of the Stratford Board of Ed, I am pleased to present our budget request for 2025-2026 for this read. The proposal represents a fiscally responsible approach that prioritizes stability and sustainability while ensuring the continued success of Stratford Public Schools. The proposed $132,953,937 budget reflects an increase of $3,451,212, 2.66 over the current year's budget of $129,502,725. This increase primarily accounts for contractual obligations with our employees' unions and ensures that no positions are eliminated due to budget reductions. In a time of transition and restructuring, the budget is designed to provide stability, allowing the district to refine and strengthen existing programs without introducing new initiatives to the operating budget. One of our primary areas of focus remains special education. This budget has been structured net of the excess cost bracket, with high-cost special ed expenses to be communicated and reconciled monthly with the town. This approach enhances transparency and collaboration, ensuring that we meet the needs of our most vulnerable students while maintaining fiscal responsibility. As we move forward, we remain committed to working closely with the town to ensure Stratford Public Schools continue to provide high-quality education for all students. We recognize the financial constraints facing the town, and we believe this budget strikes a careful balance between maintaining educational excellence and respecting the broader fiscal landscape. We appreciate your thoughtful review of this request and look forward to continued dialogue as we work together to support our students, family, and staff of the Stratford Public Schools. Please do not hesitate to reach out should you require additional information or clarification. In addition, we thank you for your, for your advocacy and continued advocacy as we work with the state to ensure that their promises are fulfilled as well. Thank you. Moving on to number 10. We have some curriculum, but I'll let Ms. Carol Fabian or Ms. Kennedy, you guys take the lead on these.
The first one is computer science discoveries. We actually discussed it last, uh, public, in, oh, I'm, thank you. So I'm just going to do another review of it, and, um, if you want to. So the computer science discoveries is an introductory computer science course that powers students to create authentic artifacts and engage with computer science as a medium for creativity, communication, problem-solving, and, um, students explore various topics in computer science, including programming, physical computing, web development, design, and data. Some of the other big ideas that are addressed in this course are, this course was developed with a focus on foundational concepts and is designed to support exploration and discovery. This allows students to develop an understanding of these concepts through play. Anything else? Am I missed? Good.
I think you did a great job.
Ms. Carol Fabian, any questions?
Yeah.
All right, any questions, comments, thoughts? Look for a motion to approve. Moved by Ms. Kennedy. Seconded by Ms. Carol Fabian. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item B.
All right, so go down to the next one, pre-calc ECE. So the purpose of the pre-calculus ECE is to prepare students in calculus while also enhancing their quantitative reasoning skills. This primary goal of the course is to teach students the properties of various types of functions and their graphs while reinforcing their algebraic and arithmetic skills. As a second goal of this course is to have students learn how to identify which type of functions will model a given set of data or scenario best, and how to interpret and use the model. This course covers a variety of different topics, and it's going to be, start in 25-26 this year, and the course offers the opportunity to earn four credits of college math at Southern.
Carol Fabian?
No, that covered it.
Any, any questions?
Would those credits be available at any of the state schools?
We have to have a partnership with each university, so each ECE class, it depends on where our teachers have like their certification to at that course. So some of them that we offer are aligned with Southern Connecticut State University, some are with UConn. I think we've had classes with Husatonic, and perhaps Sacred Her.
Yeah, you'll hear each one. This particular course is through Southern Connecticut.
Look for a motion to approve. By Ms. Kennedy. Seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number C.
The discrete math ECE. The discrete math ECE course is aligned to UConn's Math 1030Q course of the same name. The course replaced the former visualization in mathematics course, which was developed internally. Algebra II is the only prereq. To take this course, this is a happier math elective for seniors only for fall and spring. The course allows the opportunity to earn three credits of college math at UConn.
Any questions?
I'm just curious, should we, should the, should be notated in the course title? I think it was for the last, or it was for the pre-calculus? The details of where it's?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So it is not a discrete math?
It's not, it's not notated that it's a college art class at UConn, but the last one, the pre-calculus, was for Southern.
Okay. So then, look for a motion to amend and approve. Got no questions? By Ms. Cormier. Seconded by?
I just wanted to.
I just wanted to verify.
Can you, can either of you clarify? Is this a credit-bearing course for college?
As he just said, he just said it was three for.
Yeah. Yeah. It is for UConn.
It is for UConn, okay.
Good. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thanks for picking that up. Um, so. So I would look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Carol Fabian. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. For D.
So forensics. The forensic science introduction. It is a dual enrollment course taught in collaboration with Southern Connecticut State University, which will provide forensic science coursework at a more rigorous level than the current high school elective forensic science, right? Currently, we offer it as a semester course. It would become a full-year course moving forward. This course will provide laboratory experience opportunities, emulating real-world context within the field of forensic science, covering multiple topics, including DNA profiling, blood evidence, hair and fiber evidence, among others. Students will learn terminology and background information in the context of real-world crime investigation and will practice forensic analysis of data derived from physical evidence. They will also learn fundamental objectivity necessary for scientists to analyze evidence impartially and draw conclusions grounded in the scientific method that can be used to build a strong criminal case. One of the things that we discussed in that further was the great connection we have to some of the top schools around here, like the University of New Haven, our forensic science programs. So it's definitely opening an opportunity for those students to work in all areas of that field.
Any questions, comments? This just seems like a really exciting course and a great offering for our students. And I know we've talked about CE and all of this might not be the exact track for it. I think this is another great post, post-high school prep program. I think it's really exciting, so.
Thanks.
Awesome. Ms. Bedell?
Yeah, just a quick question. I, I think it's a great course. I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing how our students do in this, but can I just ask why it's not in the same form as our other curriculum documents? This seems to have come out of a, I'm just looking for uniformity in the curriculum documents.
Mr. Piazza will answer that.
Yes, I can answer that, cause we, we pulled that one off of Atlas, which is our online platform. Eventually, all of our curriculum will be in that platform. Currently, there's a small percentage that is, that's in there and forensics happens to be one of them. So when we printed it, it took a different format.
That's fine, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that we're, the students aren't looking at the same things as when they were looking over the reviews.
Is, is this course college credit? This is also through Southern Connecticut, so that should be noted, yes.
And how many credits is it for?
Uh, I do not have that information.
I'm just kidding, I was looking for.
Three. Three.
So a motion to amend to include the college credit? Mr. Cormier? Seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So then I'll look for a motion to approve as amended. Moved by Mr. Cormier.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. And then finally, introduction to maritime culture.
So this is also a UConn ECE course. It will encompass the study of history and literature to understand the international maritime culture that links peoples, nations, economies, environments, and cultural aesthetics. It begins with an introduction to nautical terminology and the fundamentals of navigation. Through lectures, reading, and film, the course builds on this foundation and covers topics including maritime exploration, the history of whaling, the psychology of being shipwrecked, the history and status of the cod fishery, and the end of the age of sail. It was definitely interesting. It's, it's encompassing multiple things across different subject areas, tying into us being on the shore and having the Long Island Sound right here. It gives other opportunities. The only thing I would like to see is it being taught at both high schools currently. This is only presented to be taught as a semester course at Stratford High School.
Definitely noted.
And, and is that just because of resources or?
It's just due to certification. So the, the teacher who will teach it at, Bedell would have to go through the certification process, and right now we don't have that.
Okay. Any questions?
Same question. How many credits, if you know how many credits are free, then I see. I just, I didn't have that when I went to high school. I can't imagine starting college with.
And that's only at UConn, so. Motion to amend.
It says UConn ECE on it. It says UConn ECE on it.
Oh, it does, okay. Alright, so we'll go with that motion. Any other discussion? Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Carol, uh, Carol Fabian, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. The next item on the agenda is request for funding of CIP. There's just been a little confusion and just to ensure that, that we can alleviate some of that confusion, I put this on here. I'm gonna look for a motion, an official, it'll be official request from the board for funding for the three vans that were previously approved in the town council's cap, in the boards and the town council's capital improvement plan. So I'm gonna make a motion to officially request from the town the funding for the three vans that were previously approved in last year's capital improvement plan. Second from Ms. Bedell. Any discussion?
Just some clarification.
Yep.
These would be the vans we were discussing that would be sort of multipurpose for like our sales program and our smaller athletic teams. Wonderful.
And, and it's just, they're, they're in the process, but there was just a confusion whether the board needed to officially request it, so just to alleviate that step. In case it is needed, I wanted to take care of it now instead of have to wait till later. Motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. And then I'd also like to make a request, an official request to the town that we got our capital improvement balances.
Monthly. Monthly.
Our monthly capital improvement balances. We've, we've, we haven't had one in a little bit and I just wanna, it just helps us guide and make decisions as we go through the process. And again, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's necessary, but in the event it is, I just want to officially request and make a motion that we respectfully request from the town an updated capital improvement balance sheet and that we receive it on a monthly basis.
So moved.
My motion is seconded by Angela Powers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passionately. Alright, the committee assignments, the superintendent's search resume committee will be meeting. Here was a typo. It'll be on Wednesday, March fifth, at I believe five forty-five PM. We currently have fourteen applicants. That committee will consist of the seven board members, Teresa Lacutis, Courtney Brown, and Jim Connors. And at that time, we'll review the applications and, and move forward from there. And then the negotiations committee, at a request from the attorneys, we have two contracts coming up. One is janitors and.
Custodial contract and.
There's custodians. So there's two contracts.
Secretaries, secretaries, thank you. The secretaries and the custodial contract.
Secretary and the custodians. I know, Mr. O'Brien, you've sat on them in the past. Would you like to continue?
No.
On both?
Yeah.
And does anybody else, or anybody else like to get a part in?
I will.
Okay. So we'll appoint Mr. O'Brien and Ms. Angela Powers to those committees. And then we'll move on to our, our committee reports. Either Mr. Kennedy or Ms. Angela Powers, or Ms. Carol Fabian, on curriculum.
I was the president at last meeting, but we presented a lot of policy today, so I'll pass it over to Ms. Carol Fabian to give me other updates.
So at the curriculum committee meeting, we went over all of the curriculums that you heard tonight that were passed. We also had some presentations from our two assistant superintendents regarding the updating of policy revisions and the schedule for that. I feel like I'm forgetting one more thing. Oh, the curriculum cycle. Yes.
Any questions? I, I'd just say I'm excited to see all these, these new curriculums coming forward. I look forward to what else will come out of the committee. And you guys got a good one. And I look forward to some of the updates, so I'm excited. Finance committee, February third, February fifth, February tenth, February twenty-fourth. Ms. Bedell, do you have an update or?
We passed forward the budget to the town tonight and looking forward to seeing what the town can expect.
Alright, any questions? School plan planning committee. So we haven't met in a little bit. One of our, one of my new focuses on that we're getting our handles around, our hands around a better understanding of the capital improvement plan, the capital improvement process. There was a point where the plan planning committee got work order reviews. There's, there's a spreadsheet that Ms. Lacutis shared with me the other day. So these are some of the new focuses that I want to bring to plan planning and we're going to be working on that on our next meeting. I'm gonna be out of town on the first Thursday, so it'll probably be a special meeting. But I want us to get a better grasp of the capital improvement, the process, how the expenditures have gone through the capital improvement over the last three, five years, so we can just better understand what we are and just have a little better, more open communication with the town and that. Liaison committee, I think, met on February nineteenth. Did somebody mention?
It was a wonderful meeting. It was wonderful to have the collaboration time. We discussed the current budget that was being proposed. We spoke about the challenges, the deficit of special education, the need for advocacy, and shared just an ongoing support of each other. It was a very collaborative meeting that was attended quite well. I don't know, maybe, can't remember, was there like twelve people there? It was, it was pretty fun.
It was all the members, the three town council members, the three board of education members.
Ms. Manjeet.
Ms. Manjeet and Ms. Gorgeous. It was good to finally sit down and meet after not having a meeting for eleven months. So it was nice to be able to update them on where we stand and we're, we're gonna see where we're struggling to maintain our budget and be where we are in a deficit, so that they have the heads up that that is coming.
On the collaboration over the next couple of months.
Yes, it's a couple more. I said just stop, the next couple of months, we were gonna continue to meet.
Excellent, okay. So you, you meet on a monthly basis?
Yeah, it sounds like it was.
Hopefully.
Yep.
Alright. How's your view, Mr. O'Brien?
Well, as everyone saw earlier, we've done a lot of work recently. And as Mr. Chairman said earlier, the committed, talented, passionate people about these various subcommittees have been incredible, the work they've done. Thank you, Jack Delapiano, for all that you've done. And one of the subcommittees, you mentioned something before, they've looked at approximately twenty-five percent of the policy handbook, which is huge, and have identified seven policies that haven't been looked at since two thousand and six, ten since two thousand and nine. So there's a lot of updating to do, but we're on the right path and everybody's working hard to update policies.
Twenty years is a long time. Twenty years is a long time.
It's a big one, but yeah. And we've got a, we've got a very ambitious group, so. Mr. Kennedy, athletic committee. Bylaws committee, just an update. The bylaws committee put its final draft together. I forwarded it over to Mr. Dugas, who responded to me this afternoon with a few comments. I think they were mostly minor suggestions, but I'm gonna look, look over them. And then I will forward my comments over to Ms. Lacutis and I just think they're, they're minor typographical stuff, but once that's done, we will send it out to the entire board and schedule a meeting sometime in the future to review that final draft. Again, I'll, I'll, I'll hold the board before we do it. If you feel comfortable with it, you can do it during a regular meeting. If you feel we need some more time and some more discussion, we'll schedule a special meeting to do that. Naming committee did not meet. Personnel committee did not meet. Cave?
Just a reminder that cave's day on the hill is March twelfth. So if anybody is available to head up to Hartford to help speak on the needs that we have.
So and, and can you just, I know Ms. Rickert spoke about it a little bit, but just what, what, what cave or what the purpose would be, do you know there?
Well, that date, it is for cave members, so all the Connecticut Boards of Education. It's there to go on testify, to meet with the legislators, to really advocate for the needs of our districts, obviously with our special education costs and capping the costs of special education, outplacements, and things like that.
Any questions? See, as Mr. P. Okay. Building needs. I have spoken a little with Mr. Llewellyn about some of these capital improvement items and I will continue to follow through on that. Like don't forget any other general good welfare.
I just wanna say this week starts the invention convention, so I'm very excited to attend a few of those this week. See, I'm a kid who's been roped into judging. Two, three.
I've got two.
I've got two.
I know four.
Ms. Bedell is doing as well.
Nice.
Let me mention too, if you don't know, about the event at Franklin School this Friday. I believe it's ten to one, about Black History Month, and the kids all, I guess, dress up as their heroes. It's a great event.
Good things going on this trip. Anything else?
I just wanted to, I know a couple of them mentioned it, but thank you to all of our parents, seed participants for coming out and being here. I know they got to leave, they were given permission to leave at nine, but they stuck around for a little bit longer. So thank, and for those of you that are still hanging with us, thank you so much. We look forward to having you participate more.
I know, I want to piggyback on that as, as Harvard Six, you're, it's, it's a great program and I'm, and I'm honored to be an alum. And you're gonna, it's a great program for you and you'll enjoy it. You're gonna learn a lot.
Anything else? Look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. O'Brien. Seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passionately. Thank you for everybody. When we came back from Montclair.